We're kind of select board meeting again, it's July 6th. We are now in John Hogaboom meeting room. We continue our meeting, so we have general public comment. Travis has anything that you have for general public comment?
Yes, I know, and recently the select board's been talking about altering vehicles going over, whether they allow them or not allow them on town highways. And I've had quite a few incidences recently on Moretown Mountain Road regarding ATV altering vehicles. And one vehicle, my truck, I checked him on windshield, went flying by me. And the state police were called. They didn't show up until many hours later. But there was no way to identify the ATV. There's no registration marks, anything on it. Traveling directly down the road, you know, I was traveling down the road also. And there's been several other incidences with lots of altering vehicles on Moretown Mountain Road. A lot this year that state police haven't called on each time and sometimes sending the sheriff out when they couldn't make it. I'm just hoping that the select board will allow, or will do this the proper way and have public comments at that time when you do have it. And I just want it to be known to the taxpayers and people throughout Moretown that it's a very noisy endeavor. I have many recordings of very loud vehicles going by all hours of the night. And there's very little, and no way to enforce this. With all that said, we also did a site visit today, which I'm not commenting too much on, but the point of that, bringing that up is the town doesn't even know where all its legal trails are supposedly, or class four roads, or where everything leads up. That's what the before meeting was for today and also later on tonight. And I should hope that the town focuses a little more on that and spends a little more effort on that before they even come close to allowing ATVs to travel on our roads. My vehicle has to meet a safety standard. And it's not only a state safety standard, it's also a federal safety standard. That's called SAE, SAE, and DOT. All my headlights have to meet that. I have to do a strict inspection every year. I don't pay insurance. So if we do allow these ATVs on the road, I hope they're properly insured and properly educated according to the VSA, state statutes of the state of Vermont. So this is just voicing some of my concern. I know there will be an opportunity at some point to make a certified public comment about that. Thank you.
Thanks. We will, just a note on that, we are, we started talking about that Travis, I think our last meeting. Perhaps at this next July meeting, Ray and Callie are working on some recommendations. We'll talk about those as a board and then we'll definitely have some public comment on this. I think our thought was that we would end up eventually voting on this at town meeting. But we need to, that's a little ways away. We want to see what comes out of it, but it'll be a good public process and I appreciate your comments on that as well.
Yeah, maybe.
Sure.
I asked Stefan to come in for public comment. Thank you Stefan for coming in. We needed a little bit of time and I wasn't sure where to get it. This weekend I had another call from, it happened to be up on Route 100B here for the Farnum dogs. So this has been, you know, we all know about this. Stefan, how many times roughly you think you've dealt with these issues?
It's with yesterday's events, it was 13 times since the 16th of March.
Alright, and Shane last year, and I don't have his records in front of me, but I have dealt with them numerous times as well. Mr. Farnum is, well, he abused the, the last time they were brought, so about two weeks ago, they were found in Middlesex at the new restaurant there, at the garage station, whatever it is.
The Philly.
The Philly station. There was some people from Middlesex brought the dogs to Central Vermont Humane Society. Mr. Farnum was made aware of that and verbally harassed. Anyways, he was not allowed there. And then they asked Stefan if we would bring the dogs back and I was not, it's not our job to ferry dogs back and forth. Either way, we lost the contract at Central Vermont Humane Society because they don't want anything to do with Farnum and the Farnum dogs. Because of his abuse and they're quite frankly frightened little guy and I didn't want to put Stefan in way either, you know, to send him out there. So we need to start a process to take the dogs. And Stefan, you have any insights on that or how that process works?
My understanding is we have to go to the town lawyer and get them on board and then we hold a meeting with Mike and discuss what's happened and all the chances we've tried to give him, bring, you know, bring him in. We have held the fines to try to help him be able to have the money to build, you know, a cattle area for them so that they're enclosed and can't get out. So bring all that up and then at that point, as the select board and working with the town lawyer, we can figure out, you know, it's just, it's unsafe for the motorists going through town. It's unsafe for the people that, you know, own property in the town. The dogs are great, but people don't know that. You know, a random pit bull comes up to your house, you're not gonna, you know, stick your hand out and say hey to it. You're gonna, you know, walk carefully around it. And they've been eating people's gardens and things like that. So I think that the next step forward would definitely be talking to the lawyer and getting Mike in here for a meeting. Or at least, or at least put out the certified letter to invite him for the meeting. And that's up to him if he decides to show up.
Okay.
And also currently, so we've been holding fines, he owes us $820.
Okay.
Which is something to keep in mind as well.
Yep. Any discussion around the board here?
Yeah, I think, I think what you're saying pretty much follows the Don board.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to work off of. I don't want to, you know, go against that because that, you know, it's going to be our best, our best bet to move forward and keep everything, you know, up and up and have it all work out. I mean, it's a shame, it's our great dogs. It just, they can't stay home.
Right, and it's causing issues and unfortunately I'm afraid someone's going to get hurt or someone that picks them up or a caregiver of the dogs or something because Mike is, seems to be a volatile guy.
Yes, absolutely. I've been in contact with the state police before because of some of his comments to me. And, you know, there's not a lot they can do, you know, just on a hearsay basis. But, you know, I'm one time away from, you know, who knows what could happen. And, you know, puts me in danger every time. And we can't bring the dogs to Central Vermont and we always won't take them anymore. So I don't really have a place to take the dogs other than back to them.
Or are they in the shop one day, you know?
Yeah, or can they hang around the shop?
Can you keep them in the town garage?
Yes. We didn't, we didn't have a place to bring them. I couldn't just drop them off at his house without him home. So that ended up being, being a fiasco all at once.
And I, last fall tried to, or I did, I stopped to talk to Mike and tried to reason with him and he just pegged rocks at me. So wasn't the best meeting I ever had. So at this point, unless anyone around the table has any other thoughts that we contact our attorney and move the process forward to fix this problem or attempt to.
Someone's got to get it before somebody gets hurt or god forbid the dogs get hit by a car.
Yeah, exactly.
They're constantly, they're only 100B and only Farnum.
Yeah, we've had lots of people reach out, you know, base at the dog, you know, we've had a lot of people that think they're nice friendly dogs. So I think people would be happy to take them.
So there are two dogs?
So there are, I, there's three of them. But I have only seen two recently. So I don't know if one has gotten rid of already or if it's just been staying near the house. I can't even, you know, comment too much on it because I don't know. But there is three of them total that I've picked up several different times. Sometimes it's-
And they use it together?
Yeah, it's usually at least two of them, sometimes I'll forget them.
See, it's right in the front of the truck with them and you can see me quick.
Yeah, they're great dogs. They sit right on the passenger seat and lay down. They're really great dogs. I'm a dog guy. They're great. If I can take dogs, I love them, but.
Alright, well, thank you Stefan and I appreciate your help. Certainly when we take those positions of animal control office, we don't think we're running into those type of situations, just a dog here and there. So thanks for your time, I appreciate that.
Yeah, you've done a real good job with Stefan.
Can I mention one, one dog related thing?
Sure.
Just maybe for some interest. So VLCT on July 22nd.
I forwarded that.
It's going to have a dog control law enforcement webinar. I don't know if you know about that.
Yep, I-
But I didn't know if that's something that Stefan would be interested, we should maybe have him take and I think there's a small fee or something like that.
Yep, no, actually I forwarded that and asked him about it two weeks ago if he could take care of that.
Yeah, I definitely do want to go because it can give me some insight from them. You know, they work with a bunch of towns, so hopefully I can get, you know, get some good ideas from that. Hopefully moving forward on, you know, maybe a different dog once in a great while instead of, you know, the same dogs day in and day out.
Thanks, so thank you Don for reminding us of that. Alright, so we'll go ahead and move on. We're on the agenda a little bit behind, so 6:05. We had legal trail 15, we all went up for a, or I guess not we all, and Callie was unable to make it due to work issues. So we had an opportunity to go up and take a walk on Trail 15. There were, Sasha will give you a list of the names of everyone who was there. So you do have that, I think between John and I we were able to compile that. So as a board, we, what we saw, I think was fairly self-explanatory and there's some questions of where that trail ultimately turns and ends. What I would suggest that we, how we start, Pam had showed us, she had some documentation, it's something that Cheryl Lynn had sent out to us. And this is correspondence from 2010 from the state. There seems to be a number of questions and issues. What I'd like to do is start by having, actually Cheryl Brown, who was originally working on that, to come in and spend a day to kind of unravel this for us and the emails, just to see where we're at. And then at some point, I think we'll need to get, you know, a lawyer or someone to interpretate, interpretate what we're looking at. But I want to get all the information that is out there on this. There were some questions that it may be, may have been changed at one point. And John was here at that time, he doesn't recall any of that. So before we go forward with anything else, I think we need to get all that information, make sure we have that in front of us. It may be a simple explanation, the answer may be already here somewhere. And if not, I would suggest that we move forward. And Travis is correct, we have a number of town trails and some roads that are ghost trails of roads. We, you know, there are surveys that are incorrect surveys. And I think on a yearly basis, we need to start or continue to start identifying these. I think, you know, in fact, we were finishing up, hopefully sometime soon on the other side of the mountain where Travis lives. But I think this next Trail 15 over here would be, if there's no, nothing in the documents that clearly points, alright, this is where it is or this is where it turns, that is one that we should, should have surveyed as well. Ray, John, Callie, Don, any thoughts?
That's what, that's what we talked about many years back, is to take one or two of these a year maybe and have them surveyed so we really knew where everything went. And in some cases, I mean, we've done it once where it dead-ended at somebody's property and so we did, we did throw it up. But otherwise we don't, but I don't know. I mean, I'd be curious, the residents, what would be your thoughts in terms of what would you like?
I think just a clear picture of where it starts and where it ends, you know? And like I said, it wasn't an issue until we started looking and then we realized there's some documentation that we'd never seen before and being the landlord, we were a little surprised that there'd been communication about changing the trail, but we knew nothing about it. So, you know, just to be clear for everyone moving forward where it is.
So that's, that's where we want to start, is where that change came from or what that was. If we can unravel that and maybe that, that's a good starting point.
And this trip does dead-end on Maryland's land, so it does go nowhere.
The island slot, I think.
Either way, whichever defines where it goes.
Still ends there, it's going to be on her property.
Right, in the middle of her property.
I also need to look at the deed my father-in-law bought the third house by. And I remember something about it being in three separate parcels and then the town ended there. But I'll have to dig that deed up and see, maybe the legal crap ended at the third house. Yes, yeah, I knew that was in the deed.
So the third house is where the woodlot was? There was an old sewer hole there, it's kind of filled in, and you wouldn't know it.
Yep.
What's known as a third house.
So I will research that deed and if it ends there, then there's no mayfield because it doesn't turn immediately.
Right. Alright, well, again, I'll contact our, yeah, I'll try to speak with Cheryl tomorrow, see what her timeframe is and, but we'll move forward with this and try to get.
So Stefan, we talked about me managing, do you want me to get you that distance or do you want to wait?
I can wait on that, we'll see what the, you know, just trying to see what that comes out. And then there'll probably be a time where they'll, you know, a survey or something might come up and do something like that. But it seems like the easiest way to figure out where it is.
Yeah, I think with all these tails, I think it'll just solve a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Just to do a couple a year and just get it defined.
Right, spend the money. And it, because it typically will cost us, you know, probably around five grand before we're done, before you're, we're doing it, but.
It's still worth it.
Yeah, I think for everyone's peace of mind and property.
Because a lot of that town is, it's on a map, it's town property. What we want, a lot of times, and I've been on the town trail.
Right, you shared a story that you had someone last fall come up and park their camper there, right?
Yeah, in the back of their camper truck.
Right. Because they thought they were on a-
And I was camping on town trail.
Right, so that's an example of what can happen when they're not clearly defined. So I agree, and I agree with Travis, we, something we should probably look at.
Thank you, I appreciate you focusing out.
Okay. Thank you, alright, so we'll go ahead. Yeah, you can stay all night if you want. If you don't mind. So I want to go ahead and move on the agenda. We have 6:15, we have zoning fees, so everyone, if they want to pull out their zoning fees. If anyone in the audience, Sasha may have an extra one if you want to look at it. So David, our zoning administrator, came to us a few meetings ago looking for some clarity and also changing some of the zoning permits and then giving clarified, they were on one document, they were stating something and the other another. So this is really to get everything in unis, working together. And perhaps some of these were changed to add a little bit because of the time difference. So first, what I take a look at, we'll just go down what we're looking to change is the subdivision. 150 per lot, that's an added, I think we never had that one. Ponds, 100. And if we, and those are zoning permits that we were talking about there. And under the development review board fees, and he has been working with John on this. They were looking to first conditionally used, non-conforming used residential, move from 75 to 100. Conditionally used, non-conforming used commercial from 125 to 150. And a development, development review board variance for residents, 125 changed to 150. Pardon me, resident 75 changed to 100 and commercial 125 with an increase to 150. The other thing that is added down below, it's a letter of no known violations. 25 and I'm not familiar with what that particular miscellaneous would be.
Yeah.
Do you know anything about no?
Somebody is selling, a lot of the lawyers are asking for no known violations to make sure everything is compliant.
Okay.
So research has to be done, so it's $25 to do that research.
Alright, I know I went through those fairly quickly, but are there any questions as, for any of them? Or all of them?
Yeah, I did, Tom.
Yep.
So the subdivision 150 per lot, is there, there is no fee right now? Is that the way I understand it or are we increasing the fee there?
It is to, if you're subdividing the permit, there's a fee for that. But if any additional lot you want to add on later or divide later, it would be an additional fee for that.
Okay, so it's a lot added to the subdivision, okay.
Okay.
Got a later date.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well that makes more sense.
So it should really say 150 per lot added to subdivision.
Okay, that's a previously approved subdivision.
Yep.
And alright, so at the ponds, $100, I'm not sure why we would want that fee unless there's some engineering involved. Do you know if there's any engineering involved with that?
I think it came back to like the one house when they had that, it was going to be over a grand that they wanted that, the zoning, going by the square footage.
Yep.
So I think that's why he came up with that, it was a cheaper alternative to it, but I don't know as far as the rest of that.
Oh, I see, okay, right, now I need to refresh my memory. Yeah, instead of charging a square footage.
Footage.
This would be just a flat rate for-
Whether you had a 100 gallon pond or a 10,000 gallon pond.
I mean, $100, I mean, I know it doesn't amount to much, but it seems a little high to me, but considering.
But Ray, I think that it's significantly cheaper than what we were looking at. Because remember what-
It was, it was.
Those guys were, you know, Law Trapp was looking for, like you said, it was $1,000.
Right.
Maybe you could do a sliding, like for under a certain amount of gallon or something?
I think from your, you know, we're starting-
It's only 100 gallons, even if it's a sliding, it's only 100 gallons.
Right.
Well, I mean, to put a pond in, you have to get all kinds of, you know, state environmental approvals anyway. So this is just for maybe prod, seeing.
Yeah, I don't think it's, because they need a zoning permit for it and-
Let's see if it fits the, in the lot or-
And they're always, like I said, it's not an added, it's nothing new. It's just actually more a reasonable fee.
Okay. As far as the DRV board increases, these are coming directly from the DRV or?
John and David were working together on this, on the board, my understanding of it. That's what David has shared with me.
Yep. I, this seems like the, those fees, I don't know how many, what our dollar revenue is for them every year, but it does, you know, if you're a resident, a small resident, you know, $25 an increase is, could be significant. You know, I don't, I don't understand, I, I guess I'm having trouble why we have to increase the DRV rates at this time.
You said, you feel different with residential and commercial?
Yeah, I feel more, I feel more towards the residential people that are, you know, trying to improve their house and, or trying to improve their, and I'd rather not increase the residential portion. The commercial portion, I guess I'm okay with, but the residential's, I think, you know, I think I'd like to give them a break. We're all, we're all trying to make it here.
And I certainly don't have any arguments with that.
Unless we want to double back with the DRV and hear what their reasoning is or something, but I agree, you know, you can't disagree with Ray either.
Yeah, I think we could do it either way. I guess I would at this point, I think Ray's idea of maybe keeping the residential and just changing the commercial would be fine. I'm hoping, based on my conversations with David, that those, he and John and DRV had good discussions about this. So I think, you know, that information is probably good stuff there, but I agree, you know, why don't we keep the residential? We have conditionally used, non-conforming used residential at 75. Let's keep it there rather than raise it to 100. And we have the variance at 100. I, pardon me, at 75, let's keep that and not change it to 100. And we'll change the two commercials from 125 to 150.
I do agree, but I think that it would be good to get input.
Want to hear from John?
Yeah, yeah, just-
Alright, so why don't we go back then to John? And just, we'll confirm with him that they've had an opportunity to look at these. And we'll give them our recommendation that we'd like to keep the residential at the 75 for the variants and the commercially used, non-conforming used and see what their thoughts on that. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Alright, so now we have courts communications. So why don't we go ahead and go around the board. Callie, do you have any reports, communications or anything that you'd like to share?
So Monday, last week Ray and I met, talked about some ATV stuff, got that organized. I have not heard back from the state yet about signs and what that would look like. I did check in with Berlin and kind of the vibe that I got was that they weren't really going to do anything with it. So, because I guess they haven't had any issues with anything. So unless it got brought to them, they weren't really gonna change what was happening.
Don't open a box.
Exactly, they've got enough boxes open right now. So that was kind of it.
Alright, so you guys, when do you have some other stuff that you want to bring to the board? Some kind of recommendations or what we, how we should move forward on this?
I'd say the first meeting in August or, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
I mean, we are certainly, I think, approaching a small scale basis. You know, we're both in the Jonesburg area. Whatever I think we're proposing would only apply. We're not talking about opening the whole Gana Moretown, I don't think. But, and just going back to what Travis said earlier, I think one of the problems we're seeing over there on our side is there's a lot of unregistered vehicles going up and down the roads and there's no regulation on.
We had a race car the other weekend, it probably went 50 by my house. Like straight race car, no doors, nothing.
You know, I'm hoping by some regulation, at least we can get, identify, you know, if we say they're going to be registered and they got to be inspected and have insurance that-
They'll at least have a plate you can track on them.
If we, yeah, we could track them down, because right now it's, there really is no way to track them down, I mean, when they go by.
Is it possible for them to be registered within the town?
Well, that's one thing we, we've thought about, is having a special registration in the town, and I, I don't know if that's possible.
You can look in the bargain, no bargain does, it can be separate from Vasa and all that, they have their own little town registration. You spend your money and crew, you register and insure.
What town is that?
Bargain.
Bargain, okay.
So that, thanks, maybe.
But it's.
Up there, yes.
I mean, over out yonder.
Most of them are out of Vasa.
You know, I, I think there's a lot of people that out there with the ETVs and ETVs that are responsible drivers that, you know, that should be able to ride these roads in a legal manner. And to just say no, I don't think is, is the best way to go.
Just a quick question, I don't know, I'm not expecting an answer, but does a registered ATV say that it can be run down a roadway that the select board allows it? Because, just because you register ATV, that doesn't mean anything, right?
The way I interpret the ordinance, that if we say they can do it, they can do it if they're registered.
Inside, on the, on the town road, there'll be no state roads.
On the town.
Yeah. On the towns that are open.
To put you on the spot, Ray, we don't have to answer this, of course, but have you ever taken a safety course for driving an ATV?
I have not.
That's one of the state requirements for running an ATV on.
I don't think so.
No, it's not.
VSA?
Not for Vasa.
Not any.
Well, this would be for Vasa then, is what you're recommending?
Well, Vasa does most of, most of the sales, so Vasa's requirements are, basically you have to be registered, insured, and over twelve.
Right.
And follow your ATV.
There's some other games that are in there that go into that. So how much VAS trail do we have in Moretown? I just wasn't being aware of some on the trail on, near today?
Well, they're two different. Vasa is snowmobiles, Vasa is ATVs.
So Vasa.
And they're completely different.
Yeah, yeah, and they don't always connect, because the snowmobiles and ATVs sometimes don't all.
So does Vasa work the same type of way that the snowmobile trails work, Vasa?
Yep.
But I, I don't think we're proposing Vasa.
No, no.
Open it up to the Vasa.
Well, that's why most of the state statutes are written for Vasa.
Uh, not the VLCT ordinance that we've been using as a guideline, does it mention Vasa at all?
Yeah, I'd like to see that ordinance. Thanks.
All right.
Well, I have a question, so when they register in a town, that means not just the people living in the town, people who want to come to your town, they have to register to be on your road or something?
That's the way I would work it.
Is that what you're saying? That was my understanding of it, like I could, I could leave and go up to Bargain, spend twenty-five dollars as long as I have proof of insurance and proof of registration. And you get the twenty-five dollar sticker for a mountain. Someone drives up from the Hampshire, right?
You have to go get a day pass.
Yeah, I want.
Like for us to go to the Hampshire, you have to get a day pass.
They do that, people do that, okay, yeah, good.
So that may be a way to control it a little bit better.
I was going to mention also where I've bicycled up in, you know, in Roxbury up above, I think that gets to be Brookfield or something? You know, up in there? There, there's a whole network of, they, they have a whole network of trails, ATV trails. They're on the road and go off the road and all that.
Oh, is it Vasa trails?
Okay, you know that would be another source of talking to a town, that's all.
Chequy does the same thing.
Oh, okay.
Where you can go from Chequy and you can actually go down almost into Dampiel on it, because we've done that.
A big meeting tonight on Marshall, about ATVs being allowed in Marshall, a big one. And I would have liked to have joined that one today, but we're talking about here, it's more perfect.
Was, uh, so there, are they going to open their whole town to it? Was that their proposal?
There is many different sides to it, it's been going on for quite some time.
It's a hot issue, people.
So I can't.
The possibly open up there.
Yeah, all right, we don't, we got our own discussions here, all right.
It's, it's a working progress.
Yeah, and I think there's going to be some common ground that we can all come on, come together with. Don, did you have anything to share with us?
Yes, I just, so we did, well, even as good as Stefan's here, so we did walk through with Efficiency Vermont to both the fire station and the town garage. The fire station, actually, you know, was in pretty good shape, I mean, there was a couple of small, I don't have the report in front of me. But the town garage, there are a couple of items that we really should act on, and that's the lighting. Not only is it not really very energy efficient, there happens to be a lot that's not even working right now, so if you're going to go try to fix what's not working, you might as well, you know, replace the lights, there's money available for that. And then the other thing that was discovered is in the right, as, as you're looking out, if you're in the garage, so the right front bed, there's a lot of moisture that's generated from when the trucks come in in the winter, and then it gets up on the roof. Stefan will jump in if I'm not describing this right, and then the metal's corrugated, it gets on the roof, it's running down, and it's gone out into the eve, and there's damage happening, and it's, you know, there's moisture and it's wet, and it's, it needs to be dealt with. And the gentleman who we walked through had some suggestions, but also, you know, suggested maybe some contractors that we could look at with or something, so. It's something that we shouldn't just kind of like.
Now, rotten wood in a building.
No, it's not, yeah, it's.
Right, exactly, it's such a building now, there's a chance to, you know, to nip it in, nip it in the bud and, and get it taken care of. It seems to be what happens is, because it's radiant floors, as the snow and water or whatever's on the trucks comes up, it evaporates, rises to the ceiling, runs down the ceiling into the top of the wall, and runs through the wall into the eaves, and then just sits there and freezes and thaws and freezes and thaws.
And big icicles outside, that's how they really sort of zero in on that, that's the problem, so.
Is that like it was a safe place from the fire station?
No, 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 the fire station's in good shape, just a couple of small things down the road that they could do.
All right, so we, on that project, on that particular thing, the lighting, I'm assuming Efficiency Vermont had recommendations for the lighting?
Uh, yes, yes, yeah.
So why don't, Sasha can work with Don, maybe looking that over, see what that is, there may be grant applications in there, usually there are.
Yeah, no, through, through Efficiency Vermont.
Yeah. And, uh, maybe Ray, maybe you could work with Martin and then figure out, and with Don, all right, who do we get to come and look at this? We need to have a, an idea of where we're at, you know, and because this may be something where I, we need to budget X amount of dollars this fall in the budget to take care of this problem.
Well, he also indicated there was some funds for that as well.
Okay, good, so.
Yeah, the hot air recliner, it gets the moisture out, but keeps the hot air in, it's basically a fan that runs.
Yeah, and the way to seal that for the, and then that would help, and then also sealing where the water's going into the eve.
So you think they'll be able, uh, through, uh, will they be able to come up with some budget numbers?
Oh, yeah, no, I, so, yeah, they, again, he sent us some contractors that, you know, that we could contact, that would come and look at it and give us quotes and stuff like that.
Very good, Dan, has Martin seen that information? Have we shared that?
Yeah, yeah.
She got it forwarded on her hand.
Okay, so he has.
And I sent it to you, I don't know if you sent it.
This was late last week.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, you got it.
Read it yet, but, so Ray, when you get a chance, and then you guys can all work together to make sure that that moves forward. But make sure it's on the business too, so we're, we're getting it.
Yeah, it is a pretty important thing to do.
And in the town hall, obviously, that's still a working project, so, you know, we did do one of the things that, that he told us that we should do like right away, which I did the other day, which was to unplug the refrigerator.
There you go.
Because he goes, you wouldn't believe how much energy that uses, especially when you don't have anything in it, no one's using it, you know, so, yeah.
It is surprising.
Yeah, it's a big one, so that was, that's been unplugged. Uh, but another item is I happened, I bumped into Mike, Michael Wood, Mike Wood the other day. And so just reminding the, us or the board that, you know, he's, he's stepping down in August, and, and that really, if, once he's gone and there's not another lister, then this throws a bit of a gum into the works as far as, you know, properties being evaluated.
That would be corporately.
Real estate sales. And he strongly suggested, I mean, I, this was just quickly at a little July fourth party, you know, we get into a deep one. You know, the firm that they also use, the assessor.
Yeah.
He was strongly in favor that we consider, you know, getting them to be there.
Yeah, so that's, if we remind, that's the, Mike came in, or I guess we were on Zoom at that point.
Right, right.
Um, we discussed that, we were going to spend a little time this summer trying to find another lister. Sasha, if you want to put that out on the front porch form, you know, another time, but when that doesn't happen, or does, even if it does, I think we need to make those decisions. And it's something that we would bring before the, the town at some point, probably a town meeting to, to make that, to change with the listers. We need them, I think, to sign off on the grant list, but I think that's probably the only thing at this point. All right, any else, Tom?
Well, I, I had some other things, I, I did call the guy, Ryan, for the Taplin School, just to follow up with him. I left him a message, I mean, I was a little down on the side the last two weeks, so can't say I did, you know, like I didn't have a chance to follow up on the remote system. I left a message for the Taplin School guy today, actually, so. Uh, I guess the only other item is when we get to talk about the meeting, it's something there. Oh, and if Ray got a chance to follow up on the hundred B, you know, like where I told you the road was, you know, Dan, you're already having some serious.
I did, I sent an email to, I, I sent an email.
To someone, yeah, good.
I'll find that.
Yeah, no, that's great, no, just because we can bug them, you know, because it'll be a shame, you know, it'd be a shame if they, you know.
Yeah, it's the same email I mentioned again about the, the ponding right here. So, but I have not received a response.
Don, any answers?
No, no, I mean, of course, I always have stuff, but that's good for now.
John, Ray. I don't, I don't have anything, so Don wants to take my time.
Yeah, something pertinent they were working on, Don, so, a couple of things that come my way as far as communications. We had a, an email from, and I don't have her name right in front of me, but she was wondering why we need to lock the access over here.
They wanted, I thought they wanted it to be shut.
No.
Oh, it was the other way around.
Yeah, in a minute, I'll give you just a moment, Stefan, I just want to make sure we're clear. Um, no, they would like, the question was, oh, why is this locked? Everyone else is allowing, it's not a very far walk, and if you're giving exercise to me, but anyway, Stefan, you had some thoughts on this.
So part of the reason that got locked is when it's not locked overnight, some people like to come and blow down some field, it makes it.
That's right.
For mowing and, and keeping the field, you know, looking decent, that was the reason it originally got locked up.
Right, yeah, I think I recall that.
And I worry that, you know, especially with the, the new bike area out there, you know, all it takes is some, some person that's out to have some fun and drive through, you know, a bunch of the work they did up there.
Yeah, and, I mean, the road's only about a hundred yards to the tennis courts, right?
It's, it's not far.
Far, right.
I see no reason.
If, if you can play tennis, then you can walk there.
Okay, that was the case. And there's plenty of access, if someone's in a wheelchair such to get around and up through, I, I just looked.
I mean, you can't drive a mower through, so the wheelchair should really get through.
All right, things like that, so I want to make sure everyone has access to it, so. Yeah, based on, you know, the history of when we haven't had it, there's been problems, I don't think there's any reason to change that, and it's, like I said, it's, it's not very hard or far to the recreational facilities, and part of it was the, the bike trail, and if you're biking, again, I won't know what the problem is, so we'll go ahead and leave that there. The other gate issue that I had was up on the Moretown Mountain Road, and Loretta Keen, she has the property that's right opposite Mr. Grantfield's pit, the same pit up there, and there's, there was a steel gate there, and she shared photos with me of where the snow had been pushed back and pushed against the gate and such. I contacted Martin, I get ready for came, I got an email from Martin, he had an opportunity to take a look at it. He thought they were probably responsible for it, for the damage on the gate. So he's willing to look in to a price, price out of gate to see what that might be. The other thing is, the gate up there, and I went and took a look at it yesterday as well, the gate's really pretty functional, there's a couple of bends in it, so we may, we're going to let Martin handle it with her, we may give them a little, you know, the price of the gate or a little bit of the money of the gate, and that's what they got, and help there with that.
Okay.
Just so everyone is aware of that. The other communication I had came from Karen, Karen Horn, and she was advocating for the Planning Commission to continue remote virtual meetings, or, or having that ability to do that. And she urged that we spend some money to get, we have a screen, this is a screen that I have, we can use it as long as I'm around, probably longer than I don't use it anymore, but we would need a mic, this owl thing or something.
Yeah, the owl's nest that we were gonna have.
So I, I would still like, Don, if you could follow up.
Yeah, no.
And, you know, see what people are thinking now that they're using it.
Yeah.
Because it sounds good, but how does it actually work?
Yeah.
And then we can, I'd like to try myself to hitch on a meeting just to see.
Yeah, I'll get back to you this week on that.
So, just that's out there, so people are perhaps interested, and there are good reasons, we have weather events, you know, illness or something, sometime, it may be, and it may be the way of the world. I guess that's all I have for announcements or communications, so Ray, what else you have?
Well, I did meet with Ken, Robbie, and from DuBois and King, and Eric from Stantac, we walked the west side sidewalk. Just informally, I just wanted to walk through there with them to make sure that we were all in the same vein, done a lot of things, and that. You know, pretty much, I think they, they've done a good, really good job, I think they got everything covered, they, they know what they're looking at. I feel pretty confident that they're, when they meet with the landowners, that issues will be resolved, and everybody, you know, as best as they can, will be happy. I mean, it's, you know, Frank Fias is, his porch is right, it's in the right of way.
Yeah.
So he's going to lose everything in front of his porch. And, you know, I don't know how that's going to go, but it's, it's in the right of way. So I think that's probably the most controversial part of that whole project, probably. Uh, and I, I don't know any solution to that problem. It's, it's really not the town problem that he has built so close to right of way, but, you know, we'll see where they go, but.
Well, did he, did he actually build the porch?
I, I don't know.
I think that, I mean, that.
He might have bought it like that.
That building was a, you know, it was like a canyon's years and years ago.
So, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe it won't be a problem, but.
Yeah.
That's what I saw is, is the biggest thing there. The Sumner tree, I don't think is an issue.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, so I, I, I think Ken and Eric, I think they're really a good, they've done a really good job as far as bringing out the project.
And how about Strauss's, that, is it the locust tree that they were talking about?
I think the locust tree is going to be okay.
That's what I thought.
Some of the smaller stuff, I think.
The smaller stuff.
Have to be taken out, but I think the locust tree is good.
Okay.
Yeah, there are some areas. Yeah, there are some areas that we can caper that sidewalk from five to four foot, you know, to give us, you know, uh, if necessary.
Oh, really?
So, I, I didn't really know that, but, uh, they're saying that it's okay.
No, I didn't, yeah, huh.
Yeah, so, I, I believe they'll be, you know, going, going forward, meeting with the landowners.
Okay.
So. Ken, and Ken just gave us an email, and I apologize for, um, that he was gonna start trying to meet with the landowners. Just talk with them, just, uh, to let them know where those changes are, or what, the difference between what it looks like on the map and what it's, um, actually would be. So I think that's a very good step. Once that happens, we'll get everyone back together, find out what, uh, the temperature is there, we'll have more information at that point as far as, as costs go, uh, or, or not. We have spent money on the project, um, I think roughly sixty thousand so far, um, between engineering and such. I would have to look at, uh, that's just round figures. And that stuff that if we decide not to do the project, we'll have to reimburse back to the state. So, what will, you know, at this point, it's almost, cost-wise, depending on whether we have lots of other, uh, changes, it might be, uh, the same or less to, to do or not do the project, it's gonna cost us money in one way or another. But we'll have a, a better indication on that. That being said, um, on the meeting minutes, when I was originally asked what the township was, I had said eighty thousand. Uh, and I had gotten that figure from Cheryl in that, that night, um, but there was a mistake there, me, um, made, and she corrected that with me the next morning. It was a hundred and three thousand that the township would be. So that will be changed on the meeting minutes as well, but I wanted to make sure that was clarified. Apparently, the A U that was written on the folder inside, but it was an old number from her mother or something, but, uh.
We had a point, though, I mean, that, um, since we're gonna, um, they're gonna meet with the landowners, then there's gonna be a re-grouping and talking and all of it. But maybe afterward, they meet with the landowners, we kinda have the consultants start doing anything for a little while, just so we don't keep the meter running and spending money while we have our own, you know, in other words, they meet with the landowners, we get that information, we have a meeting, and then go forward from there, you know, not have them keep doing.
Right, I think that, I think once we, we have a better idea of what's going on, then we can make those decisions. Are we, do we wanna put the brakes on things, stop things? Do we go forward and let the town, you know, do we vote, when do we vote on this, or what type of information do we need for that?
I was, you know, something, just, you know, at some point, you have to say, okay, wait, don't spend any more money.
Right, exactly, but we need to get to a point in the process where we have all the information to make those decisions.
That's for who?
And then, then we can make those, um, I know there's some discussion on some of the soils, uh, that they have taken, uh, uh, the soil samples or, or such, I didn't quite understand.
Yeah, so the, the state is cleaning out, this is, you know, within the last year, uh, they have this, uh, I forget the exact term, but it's basically contamination of the soils from exhaust from vehicles. And so, uh, they're looking at that and, and seeing if there is any of that in this segment on the sidewalk, which could affect the costs either way.
I don't really still understand that, so they're, within the soils, the, the exhaust from cars going by, and the.
Yeah, it settles on the pavement and it washes, it, it's, but, like the roads, when it first starts raining and you're biking, it's very slippery, you know? It's because they have this layer of, like, oils that come out of that exhaust, you know, this particles.
Right, yeah, huh.
Right.
I don't think they're even looking at it.
Right, so, I mean, there is, I mean.
And it's like.
Right, so things like that, or, you know, something like that comes on, that's gonna be a, you know, a significant cost of the project, those are the type of things. Well, those are the type of things we're trying to get the information on, so we can make that.
Absolutely.
So we had that on this side, too?
But it wasn't an issue on this side, because the regulations came into effect after this project was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
It's another unfunded mandate.
Yeah, also isn't very considered.
So, it's, um, anyway, so there, there are plenty of issues to, to take a look at that, but we're doing everything we can to make sure that we get all the correct information and that we can make a informed decision on that.
Well, if Ken needs any assistance, I'd be happy to join him on any of the meetings, especially Frank.
All right, very good, we'll let him, we'll let him know that. Uh, Ray, did you have anything else?
Yeah, there's a couple of other things, uh, one, we'll, we'll need executive session later regarding that, uh, meeting, uh, with Phil Litterd and the T D case. I did talk to Martin about, uh, the, where we're at with the consultant, um, I think the consultant's staying with the, the work with Martin as far as the coding.
Robert Turner.
Robert Turner. So Martin told me that, uh, he believes the ball is in Martin's court, he was, uh, he was having trouble with his computer, uh, and Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, I believe, is scheduled, or Martin was working on getting them scheduled to come up and help him get through this problem they're having.
Okay.
So, Martin is working on it, it's been, you know, obviously Martin's working on roads too, so, but, uh, he does have it on his agenda to get this done.
Anything else from the shop, or anything else you wanna share?
No, uh, I'm not sure, we stayed with the, with the, uh, more snow plow.
We talked to, uh, Harvest the end of last week, I think it was Thursday, and they hadn't received the part yet, it was on back order. So it's, you know, just waiting for the part to come and then get scheduled in. They are swamped there as well, they said the parking, and they do what they could to fit it in, because it's been waiting. They haven't heard anything yet today from it, but we're gonna call them again this week and, you know, keep on about what's going on with that.
So, in the meantime, we're just doing a little.
So Eric has been doing, um.
Okay.
The mowing, I spoke to Martin a couple of weeks ago, um, and they, between vacations and just, we have more road maintenance work we have to do. Eric's done it in the past, he's, uh, he's done it a couple of times, the guys have been doing, uh, some of them, uh, the trimming as well. But we'll, um, go ahead and do that until, um, you know, the machine comes back. And Martin, I did speak with Martin, I think last Thursday or Friday about that, and that's exactly, he said, they're saying a week or two before the part comes in again, and then, you know, they'll get to it when they can, but.
Well, we, uh, you know, we give our, once a week, you know, a call and, and check in, just so we don't get, you know, brushed down the road. We'll try to get back as efficient as we can.
Good. How do you tell him to submit, um, for himself, and I don't know whether it was Sean or the guys, if they brought their mowers over to, um, you know, submit, uh, fifty bucks a time that they use their mower to, to pay or to do the lawn, and he seemed that fair, but, uh, I haven't heard anything on that, so. But hopefully that'll get fixed up, and I think, um, they're working on something, uh, in the budget, he's looking at something else, so we'll, we may or may not see something, um, with that. Ray, are you all set?
Yeah, like I said, we'll, we'll need to win the executive.
Yep, all right, aside from that, yep, we'll do that towards the end, so we don't have to kick anyone out until we're towards the end of the meeting. All right, so next thing we have is the select word minutes, noted change that I, um, talked about earlier, are there any other changes or?
Yeah, I don't have them in front of me, but just reading them, just in the part when we talked about the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I think there should be something included in there that there were, you know, uh, residents here who were speaking out against, you know, the possibility of not having the sidewalk, there's not, nothing really mentioned in there, that people weren't wanting to have it looked at, and possibly not to be. You know, just to add that into the notes.
Sasha, could you add that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes amended by you and Ben, Don.
Second.
John, thank you.
Got it this time.
Any other discussion on meeting minutes for, uh, six twenty-one? Six twenty-one, twenty-one, all right, all in favor, go aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, everyone. Uh, all right, so now we, we move on to old business, and, um, we've already talked about the ATV ordinance, um, and we have CB Fiber and the, the service officer down there as well. Service officer, Sasha, I guess we're still looking, uh, for that.
Yes.
Or someone there, um.
And Lister.
And Lister. And as far as CB Fiber, um, they're looking, again, we will need to, at some time when we get into budget season, what we wanna do with some of our funds that we have, perhaps to allocate or not to them. The other thing that I have, uh, for old business is some Morfes stuff. And I have contracts, uh, for the fireworks that we discussed, um, so that the dates, and I think we went over this, um, I need to change this, they're, they're saying, get this, the twenty-fifth day, uh, of September, um, that was a week later than what we had originally said. So I'm hoping they'll all have, uh, that date available.
I will be in Stratton, but that's okay.
Stratton, what are you doing down there, doing some run or something up and down?
OCR World Championships.
Yeah.
I qualified two years ago, so, and then it was canceled last year, so.
Oh, congratulations.
Qualified to go this year in Stratton, on Stratton Mountain.
What is it, what is it called?
It's obstacle course racing world championships.
Wow.
All right, um, I know I talked, I spoke with Stefan, he's sound, yeah, that's great.
So Sean will be there, though.
That means I can't find the whole day, no, no.
Exactly, so, um, I know we reached out, I think Stefan's gonna be involved as well with, with Morfes, but they seem to be moving along, um, pretty well with that. We had budgeted for the, the, um, events, we put in our budget this year, we put five thousand in, there's four thousand for the fireworks. The other thing that they have asked for out of that money, well, probably a little less for all at some point, but the, the other thing they've been able to, um, contract, or if we say okay, is Ragged Company, it's, uh, banned, it's out, one of the guys lives in town, Steve Sharp, um, two one-hour sets at Morfes for five hundred dollars. So we have those, um, two, uh, that are scheduled there, done.
So I, I'm waiting to get a quote on those hats that I showed everybody.
Yeah.
The Moretown hats, I went to Deerfield the other day, so, you know, I'll keep, keep you posted on, you know.
Yeah, so what's your thought of that, we, we buy them and then we sell them, or something like that?
Yeah, something.
Some kind of a donation thing.
Yeah, something, it was a fundraiser.
Yeah, I think that's a, that would be a good idea.
I mean, then I was talking, I mean, we're not talking, he, he said, you know, you, you, you maybe wanna get fifty or eighty hats tops, you know?
Yeah.
It's not like you're gonna buy two hundred, he said, you'll have a hundred and fifty in your house. You know, no, so, you know.
Well, always, everyone has a five, so there's.
The guy lives here on Earl Road, who owns Deerfield, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, he, he was great, you know, it wasn't like he said, oh, yeah, I'll buy two hundred and fifty hats, you know, he was.
We got a team for you.
So, uh, I'll hopefully buy the next media on some information, or I could just get in touch with Leanne, tell her about it, you know, whatever.
So just for everyone on the committee, the committee is made up of, um, Leanne, my, my, my wife, uh, Lindsay Staples, Michelle Beard, Meg Schultz, and Dwayne Pearson.
Oh, great.
So those are the people, everyone that's working on it, and anyone else who would like to, to participate or work on it. I know they've reached out to the, um, Jennifer Hill with the library to make sure they're involved. The school has, um, got the beer tents from Lawson's all secured, so they're doing that.
Are they giving the sheriff as well?
They asked about that, if we need a sheriff, and I, I.
I don't know if we do or not, but I thought that if we're on public land, that's how good you have to have one or not.
Well, we need to look into that, whether we need, the other thing is, we have, we have, um, Tom Chaney, our, and he's a, he's a registered, he's a police officer, so.
Chinette.
Chinette, Tom Chinette, um, and these are, um, constables, thank you, Sasha, so he might, if we need something, but we can look into that. Well, certainly the safety is, is going to be paramount. I've reached out to, um, one of our companies in town, hopefully to get a sponsor to sponsor a pig roast. And it sounds like they may, and I've got someone who lined up who would do it for us, um, for five hundred dollars, we can get a hundred and thirty-pound pig roasted. These guys are doing corn.
Yeah, and we're maybe Neil Farmer's trying to get them to, you know, to do maybe, and to help us, and we'll get a little by donation, but a fundraiser for the fire department as well.
And I thought the same with, with the, with the pig thing, we got it sponsored, it'll be by donation, so any, anyone can come, this is a free event, but if you have a donation, you give it, and that money can go to some, something in town, whether it's, um, I think that committee, whatever, we'll come up with some, but the thing that we give out to people or something like that, just sort of gives back to whoever's coming. So I think they're, it sounds like they're on the right track, and everyone's trying to get some things done, so, um, I'd just like a, a motion to approve, um, what we have so far, the two, the two events. I think we already talked about the fireworks, but just, so, um, approve the, the bands as well.
I'd make the motion to approve the expenses for Morfes.
Suzanne.
Thank you, Kelly. Any discussion, um, in favor, all right? I, thank you, everyone.
I will, you have that.
All right. And again, if any one of the, as things are coming up, you've got ideas of popping up in your head, or things that could possibly, uh, do, um, let us know. One of the things that, again, we're trying to make this, uh, not cost a lot of money, but have, you know, or certainly free for people coming in. I'm thinking like a touch the truck thing, you know, with Stefan, and think about that with the fire trucks, uh, maybe the town to large, um, and maybe you guys, not necessarily, if you can talk with Martin and, um, or just everyone down there, you guys must have good connections, or even you, Ray, who has, you know, who can bring in a nice piece of equipment or something, you know, one of those types.
We'll just ask for the, there's one down on the street over there today.
Exactly, that's exactly what I mean.
The blue.
Good idea.
The blue truck we have is beautiful, I think it's a bring down.
Oh, yeah, I think that would be a good thing to let, uh, the new one there, let people see that, and, um, kids like.
That blue truck are beautiful. Yeah, it's really, the color's great, I love it.
Yeah. And if anyone, again, has ideas of those things, or if you have a race car or something, you wanna drop by with, that would be good, or, I don't know, what do you have, are you gonna be, Travis, or anything?
We're all on the fire.
Oh, that's right, sorry, yeah. So anyways, that's moving on, any other, um, old business that we have to discuss?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, because I was down on the side, hope to be in touch, you know, we were gonna be looking at the trees in front of the sand pit.
Right, right, right.
We have the soil report, we're gonna think about feeding the trees, so.
Okay.
I lost two weeks there, but I'll get back on the chase, and you got to talk to Martin.
I've talked to Martin already about it, so.
Yeah, great.
You know, it's much earlier to bring it down.
Do it, right?
Right, 'cause he has people going on vacation.
No, no, and I've got some people who would help too, so.
Yeah.
That's great.
And the personnel policy, we're gonna, any more on that tonight?
I've got the numbers over there, can you clip?
Yeah.
So we were, um, everyone, we wanted to take a look at, uh, what was being paid now and the changes, is that what you were, we were looking for?
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I still, I, I think the way we used to do the family, is we did the same thing with the, um, two-person, in that we paid fifty percent of the difference between the single rate and the family rate. And it's still, I, I'm still not happy with the way that it reads. I, I think that if you're, we're gonna keep the, where it says single rate, then we should, under dependents, we should make sure that that's additional. In other words, we pay that in addition too, so I mean, if, if we just, I mean, it's okay to have numbers in there, but I mean, I would just say that we should be saying that we pay a hundred percent of the single rate per employee, and, uh, and then, and then for adding dependents, say fifty percent, plus fifty percent of the two-person or family rate, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's nice because they change yearly, every year those numbers will change, but we, we have the percentage that we're paying, so we know, um, what that would be.
So, how did you word that, one hundred percent of employee?
Of the, uh, single rate per employee. And then fifty percent of the, uh, additional. Let's see, what's the best way to put that? Oh, okay, so in other words, if you wanna add dependents, then it's fifty percent of the difference between the single rate and the two-person or family. I think that's probably the best.
I think, um, what to do, why don't you guys, this, I don't think that there's something we should go on tonight, why don't we put it together?
Yeah, okay.
And then, so everyone can read it and kinda really make sure and clarify, um.
So just, we'll just.
Right, and so we'll eliminate the numbers and we'll have the percentages there. It's all based on the policy what we have, we just need to make sure that it's. Correctly, we gotta. Are you clear, Sasha, with that? All right. Let me just make sure. All right, uh, is there any other old business? You have a couple good things, that's right, all right, what do we got for new business?
Um, Neck of the Woods has been parking their van out here overnight, and they just wanted to make sure that it was okay with you guys, it's gonna be for a total of seven weeks. They've been transported from here to their building out towards Wakefield. And that was in the mowing from the old Mecca.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, as long as it's not, you guys won't find that in your way for any maintenance issues or anything like that?
I haven't even noticed that it was here yet, so.
So, seems like that's fine, it's not a bother, so we kinda agree, and that's the only person that's really using it at this point.
Is there, uh, is, I would say, do we have like a good phone number just in case for some reason it is parked?
Yeah.
In a place that we needed it moved at a weird time or something.
All right, that sounds fun.
And then Dick Valentinetti's term is up as of the end of July, and he would like to continue. And that paperwork is in the binder over there for approval.
All right, well, I will, um, make a motion to reappoint Dick Valentinetti, the town health officer.
Second.
Thank you, John, any questions on, uh, Dick's appointment to, uh, health officer? All in favor, vote aye.
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 Aye, thank you.
And then I talked to the Lister, Mike Wood, and just to kinda continue on what Don was saying, they have, they haven't found anybody, they did have one person that they thought was interested, but they ended up not finding it. And Mike also said that the new, the appraisal will be coming up in twenty-four, the reappraisal for County Life. Nemrick will give us a good deal on it as long as it's done in the immediate future, otherwise the price is gonna be going up.
All right, so we'll need to maybe get Ed in here from Nemrick to discuss that. But you know what, I think that would be good for our August, first week in August meeting, piece here, so we can discuss both issues, Lister issues and what they could do there, and, um, if there's a reappraisal coming up, um, what we should do there.
And Mike would probably come to that meeting too, I thought.
Yeah, I think that's something we'd wanna, I can.
And that's it?
All right, anyone else around the table have any other business, um, up there, Don, you got any? Kelly? Okay, I don't think there's anything else, um, we'll also, maybe at the, the next meeting, be able to set the tax rate. I, I've got some preliminary, preliminary stuff from the, the state on the school rate, um, that looks, um, better than it has, you know, because of the increases that we've seen in the past, um, but that, I, I don't have those concrete yet, so, um, but by our next meeting, we should be able to have a fairly good discussion on the tax rate. Hopefully we can set it at that meeting, so we can get tax bills up and get the money in. And, uh, we have the ATV stuff that we're looking at in the future, um, Don, you're working on a couple other little projects. Continue just to, um, make sure that everyone is, um, touching base with everyone, so that everyone can help and get these stuff moving forward. And if there's no other questions, concerns, I would make, oh, a motion to go into executive session, for Ray, uh, issue, and that is, um, this is where premature public knowledge, or, or John, what was this? What's this, the lawyer one?
Well, this is, this is, yeah, I think this would be the lawyer one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that, that would be, um, executive session to discuss, uh, attorney-client communications in the, say the, an accident occurred on our road.
So that's.
As, as, um, as entitled one, section three thirteen, one F.
That states confidential attorney-client communications made for the pur- purpose of providing legal services to the body.
Yeah.
All in, uh, is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All right, now, I do, also just wanna point out, we will be going into open session after this, okay? We have to make sure people realize that.
See you guys, thank you. Great, all right, so, uh, all in favor of the executive session, vote aye.
Aye.